The township saw it fit to try to rezone and take away property rights from this property. In reaction, the landowner in Toll filed another application. And what did they do? They filed an application that addressed the alleged issues that the township supervisors saw fit to deny the application on previously and that the lower court, the Chester County Court, determined should be a basis for affirmation. That litigation still remains pending before the Commonwealth Court. It was argued in May, and we're still awaiting a decision. Given that indecision and given the township's rezoning efforts, which they adopted in mid-August, left Toll and the landowner with no other option other than to file another application to secure its rights under the law that existed. So that's why we're here this year. We're here with an application that, yes, is generally the same as the last one, but for a few changes, one of which is significant, which is the Collector Road. Couple of them I don't believe are significant, but we'll go through them this evening in detail, and we'll open up for questions from the Planning Commission members as well as from the audience through public comment. But I thought everyone should know, I've never been anything other than upfront with the township, with the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and the public. We're here because of what the township supervisors decided to do. You may like what they did, but it has an opposite and equal reaction or consequence. And that's what this is. Another application, another process, potentially multiple years of litigation. That's where we are at the moment. So what did Toll do? Toll revised the plan, and what is being shown up on the screen right now is the revised plan. And the major change is adding the Collector Road, and I don't have a pointer, so I apologize, running north-south from West Pleasant Grove Road to 926. And that is something that the township denied the plan on previously. Toll does not believe it's required, continues to reserve all of its rights with respect to any of the issues that were denied back in the original application. Are you looking for a pointer? Jack will assess it. Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
I don't even want to ask why you're the only one sitting at the table. Oh, okay. I thought it was because you wanted a stare. So, Jack and I have had many conversations before about Article 1, Section 27, so it's refreshing to see his consistency. So, the major plan change was the Collector Road, and Andrew is highlighting it here with the red pointer, running north-south from West Pleasant Grove Road to 926. And as a result of providing that Collector Road, which again Toll doesn't believe is required, but is doing so to preserve its rights should the court agree with the lower court and the township. And as a result of that Collector Road, the density of the projects stayed the same, but the mix between single families and carriage homes changed. And what happened was that in the prior application, what was proposed was 117 carriage homes, 127 side-entry single-family detached homes, and 73 front-entry single-family detached homes. What's being proposed now has an increase in carriage homes and a decrease in proposed single-family homes. Specifically, 135 carriage homes, 118 side-entry single-family detached, and 64 front-entry single-family detached. But overall, it's the same proposed density. It's 317 new units with two existing. So there's no change in the overall density of the project. The revised layout also has relatively the same amount of open space. It's still 61% proposed. Previously, that was 197.15 acres. Proposed now, it's 196.94 acres, just a little bit under, about .2 or .21 acres less. Overall, and I don't know if we can toggle back and forth between the prior plan, one of the comments, I believe that came from the Planning Commission, was about minimizing the number of single-family homes along the western side of the property, parallel to South New Street. And what has happened here as a result of the site plan layout is you can see that there was a large number of single-family homes. They have now been removed, so that swath of ground running down the western side of the property is now proposed to no longer have any homes constructed in that location. Also, as a result of the Collector Road, some of the internal stormwater management basins were moved and modified. Additional preliminary testing has been done in order to substantiate the feasibility of those basins and the ability to comply with regulations. The overall layout continues to maintain all perimeter property buffers and setbacks. The, Andrew's highlighting those areas, those are the same as they were in the last application. In addition, it maintains all internal private trails, but there is a new proposed meandering six-foot-wide paved asphalt trail running along the outskirts of the Collector Road. It's not right up against the side, it kind of meanders in and out of the open space areas. We've also maintained the primary drip disposal fields on the property. Those are the large two areas up in the corners of the property, in the northwest and southeastern corners. There were some internal areas, in case they're needed, they've been modified and relocated. The hope, and I believe the township sewer engineer continues to recommend public sewer for this property, however, it's not in the Public Sewer Service District. So for purposes of compliance, we must continue to propose some type of onsite waste water treatment and disposal. Overall, one of the other changes that we did to the plan in order to address alleged reasons for denial was to show the location of the alternative site accesses, primarily the 926 access opposite Bridlewood Boulevard in Formberry Township. Also, the realignment or relocation of the secondary access on West Pleasant Grove Road. There were two options there. One was to either re-profile the road to increase site distance or relocate it. As a result of relocating the road, we've also limited and reduced the amount of woodland disturbance that was proposed at the original location. In addition to that, West Pleasant Grove Road access, we now have a third access as a result of the Collector Road. However, that will not line up directly with Orbus Way, which is the other portion of the Collector, because the church property is in between the edge of the Robinson Tract and where that Orbus Way lines up. So what you have now would be a bit of a staggered intersection. One other thing to note was that there were comments in the prior application about removing the right-in, right-out on Route 202, and that has been eliminated as well. So this revised plan shows all of those alternative site accesses that were discussed at the prior conditional use application. And I have with me this evening our traffic engineer, Nicole Klein, from McMahon Associates, who will go over the revised impact as a result of laying out the Collector Road through the property as well as the alternative site accesses, in addition to looking and continuing to look at the impacts on the intersection of 202 and 926, as well as the intersection of 926 and South New Street. And there was one other item, and it's not really much for discussion, there was an alleged basis for denial that there were no street photos shown as part of the application. The lower court found the application to be incomplete in a site analysis as a result of not having that information. So we have added that information to the plan. While we don't believe it has any legal significance under the application in terms of requirements, we've done so for a completeness compliance requirement. So we have the property, pictures taken from all around the perimeter of the property, those are shown in the conditional use application as well, and they're displayed here on the screen right now. So at this point, I think what I'd like to do is have Nicole come and go over traffic, since it's what we believe is still obviously the major issue with respect to this application. I don't know if that mic's on, Nicole, maybe you can check.
Testing.
Right. And Nicole, what I'd like you to do is, I guess, I've touched on the relocated accesses and the Collector Road. If you could slowly walk through, you know, what you determined, and this is all in your traffic impact assessment that was submitted with the conditional use application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if you can highlight for the Planning Commission and the members of the public, what's different about this plan, and what are the impacts as a result of the changes?
Absolutely. What I'd like to start with is just a reminder of the criteria that we are bound by in terms of traffic. We have completed a revised traffic study to match the revised plan that Greg has summarized, which I will discuss in more detail. It has been prepared based on the requirements of township, as well as PENDOT, who has jurisdiction here because of the state roadways. What are, we are required to evaluate is the average delay at the study intersections, and they are given a letter grade. It is called level of service, and those letter grades match increasing vehicle delay. And those grades are anywhere from a level of service A with little to no delay, all the way up to a level of service F, which has more significant delay. So that is the criteria that we are bound to evaluate as part of the application. The applicant is not required to fix existing issues. They are required to mitigate any traffic impact from the proposed development. So with those things in mind, I will review changes in the plan in a little bit more detail. And as I go through each of the traffic-related changes, I will speak to the operations in terms of those levels of service that I just described. So first, as Greg mentioned, the previous application had an access directly to US Route 202, which was right-in, right-out. That has been removed entirely from this plan at the request of the township. So no evaluation of an access at that location is included in the traffic impact study. Next, we can cover the accesses along West Pleasant Grove Road. So as Greg mentioned, there is a new intersection. The easternmost intersection will serve as the Collector Road intersection. It is new to this application. It is proposed to have stop control on the Collector Road approach, based on the width development traffic operations. It will operate at level of service A overall, and acceptable level of service C by movement during the peak hours. And I should have mentioned in the beginning, we are required for residential development to look at the weekday morning and weekday afternoon commuter peak hours. That is what the criteria is written on. Next, we come to the central access along West Pleasant Grove Road, which is otherwise referred to as Road M in the new application. This access is in the same location as the supplemental plan that was previously submitted. It was relocated from the original location in order to achieve site distance requirements. The previous location either required relocation or required modification of the vertical geometry along West Pleasant Grove Road in order to achieve that site distance. This relocated access is now about 850 feet east of Dunvegan and about 1,800 feet west of the Collector Road intersection. The westernmost access along West Pleasant Grove Road in this plan, otherwise referred to as Road K. This access location remains unchanged from the original and supplemental plans previously submitted, as it is opposite Dunvegan Road. It is proposed to have stop control on the Road K approach and maintain the existing stop control on Dunvegan Road. This intersection will continue to operate at level of service A overall and for all movements with the development during both peak hours. And what I believe I failed to mention about Road M, or that central access, is that it would also provide stop control on the Road M approach and will operate at level of service A overall and for all movements during those weekday AM and PM peak hours. So those are the three accesses on the new plan along West Pleasant Grove Road. Next, we come to Street Road, otherwise known as State Route 926. This intersection is also new, as it serves the Collector Road, and is located opposite Bridlewood Boulevard, which was at the request of PENDOT. The previous plan did have an access along 926, which was located to the west of Bridlewood I apologize, east, thank you. Now, the intersection being located opposite Bridlewood Boulevard is essentially equidistant between the two existing signals at 202 and that New Street, which is approximately 2,300 to 2,400 feet from each of those intersections. There are significant improvements proposed by the applicant at this intersection along Street Road. It is proposed to install a traffic signal. It is proposed to provide two egress lanes from the Collector Road, a dedicated left-turn lane and a shared-through right-turn lane. It is proposed to then restrike the two exit lanes that exist from Bridlewood Boulevard to provide the same, a dedicated left-turn lane and a shared-through right-turn lane. It is also proposed to provide a dedicated left-turn lane along Street Road with 150 feet of storage, and also to provide a dedicated right-turn acceleration lane along Street Road with 150 feet of storage. With this recommended traffic control, the signalized intersection and the lane improvements, this signalized intersection will operate at level of service C or better overall, and level of service D or better for all movements, which is acceptable in terms of the criteria. It is noted that the Bridlewood Boulevard left turn onto westbound Street Road will be improved from a level of service D without the development and with stop control to a better level of service C with the development and with signalization. So that covers the changes in the accesses and the Collector Road intersections from the previous plan and the anticipated traffic operations, which are all within the acceptable criteria.
And if you can now give a little description and a little additional background and detail on the major intersections that were subject of the prior application 202, 926, as well as the intersection at 926 and South New Street. And I think in particular, we have it exhibited on the 926 South New Street also go over, but I don't know what order you want to take it.
Yeah, if we could stay on the site plan first, really to set the stage to talk about the off-site study intersections. I first want to talk a little bit about the diversions that are a result of the Collector Road. So in the prior application, the Collector Road was not part of the plan. The Collector Road is now part of the plan, which runs from West Pleasant Grove Road down to 926. So, you know, additionally, the township, under a separate development application, the Orbus Way connection, which is the connector road from West Pleasant Grove Road up to Stetson Boulevard here at the school, is under construction and nearing completion. So, within our new traffic impact study, we took the traffic diversions anticipated to occur with that new connection known as Orbus Way. We took those diversions from the township-approved Arbor View Development Study and incorporated those into our without and with development conditions within our new traffic study. Additionally, the Collector Road through the Craybelly property will result in additional traffic diversions, as envisioned by the township's comprehensive plan. That is its purpose. And so we needed to incorporate those diversions into our traffic study. And we based those on previous studies that were also reviewed and approved by the township. So there are multiple movements that are benefited by these Collector Road through both properties. And as a result, they, these diversions reduce the traffic volume at a number of our study intersections. So as I go through my description of off-site intersections, I will incorporate that into the discussion, but wanted to set the stage for what was different in terms of the Collector Road connections in this study versus the previous. So with that, there are a number of off-site intersections that are required for study with this application. One such intersection is 926 and New Street. So we have developed an aerial markup as part of the application to help explain the conditions of this intersection. So generally, east-west, as Andrew is pointing out in red, that is New Street. I apologize, 926. So on the northeast corner of this area is the Robinson Tract. And so 926 generally runs east-west across the page, and New Street generally runs north-south, although the intersection is at a angle. But the Robinson Tract is in that northeast quadrant. So at the intersection of 926 and New Street, there was significant discussion and comments from the Planning Commission regarding improvements at this intersection. And as contained and detailed in our traffic study, there are a number of turning lanes warranted at this intersection. Those lanes are all warranted under existing conditions. So those are noted on this graphic in the yellow boxes, and the yellow lines depict how far back those turn lanes need to extend. So I'll cover each approach. So as you travel eastbound along 926, a left-turn lane, a dedicated left-turn lane from 926 to northbound New Street is warranted based on the existing traffic volumes. Based on existing conditions, its length is required to be 175 feet. Under the width development conditions, it is required to be 225 feet. Thus, we depict two separate yellow lines. That's the back of the storage for those lanes. As you're traveling westbound along 926, a left-turn lane is warranted under existing conditions at 150 feet in length, and in width development conditions, that becomes 175 feet in length. Southbound along New Street, a left-turn lane is warranted in existing conditions, and it is the same at 100 feet under both existing and future width development conditions. Along that approach, a dedicated right-turn lane is also warranted in existing conditions at 350 feet in length, and that lane is reduced to 250 feet in length with the development because of the diversions anticipated to utilize the Collector Road. The existing pattern of traffic from 202 to West Pleasant Grove Road to New Street is anticipated to be accommodated through the Collector Road, thus reducing that right-turn volume. So northbound along New Street, I will note that dedicated lanes are not warranted based on the volumes. However, when you provide a left-turn lane in one direction, you must shadow it in the other direction. And therefore, we are showing that because a left-turn is warranted southbound under existing conditions, a northbound New Street left-turn lane would also be required in existing conditions, and its length is 75 feet in both the existing and with development conditions. So that covers the dedicated turn lanes that are warranted at the intersection, again, based on existing condition, with some change in length based on width development conditions.
Okay. Now, Nicole, if you could be so kind as to then take us to the next step. Can those improvements be installed as they are sufficient right-of-way and what widening is required?
So there is not sufficient existing right-of-way to accommodate those improvements, nor is there the ability to provide enough right-of-way from the Robinson Tract alone. It's not possible to achieve those improvements with right-of-way to be dedicated from the Robinson Tract. So what we also show on this graphic, and you can, the audience should be able to see the colors, we designate in the boxes near the center of the intersection how much widening is necessary to accommodate these lanes. But the takeaway from the graphic is, in red, those, that is widening, that the widening in construction cannot be accommodated within the existing right-of-way or within right-of-way that can be dedicated from the Robinson Tract. The boxes in green, of which there are two, are, is widening that could be accommodated within the existing right-of-way and is along the Robinson Tract front. So that's really the key takeaway, is all those lanes that I mentioned, the right-of-way is not sufficient, nor can it be provided by the Robinson Tract to accommodate those improvements.
And this is based on PENDOT's requirements, right?
That is correct. The roadway widening is based on PENDOT requirements.
What can be done on the Robinson Tract in terms of improvements at the intersection?
So what can be done within the existing right-of-way or with property to be dedicated from the Robinson Tract is a dedicated right-turn lane traveling westbound on 926, which is proposed to be provided by the applicant, which is documented in our traffic study.
You can move on to the other off-site intersections as well.
I will also note, before we leave this intersection, that because of the addition of the Collector Road and the traffic diversions that result, the development has no impact, no traffic impact at this intersection.
Yay! Okay, sure.
Please continue.
With that, the next intersection discussed is at New Street and West Pleasant Grove Road. In terms of turn lanes, there are no turn lanes, dedicated turn lanes warranted at that And again, because of the traffic diversions, particularly the pattern that I mentioned previously for 202, southbound to West Pleasant Grove Road to New Street ultimately to 926, a significant amount of that traffic will be taken on by the Collector Road, and therefore, traffic volumes are reduced here.
Now, does it count everybody that's going to cut through?
Yeah.
You forgot I'm going to cut through.
So the next off-site intersection is 202 and West Pleasant Grove Road. Looking at, again, the, based on the level of service criteria, the development does not have an impact at this intersection. Considering the turn lane warrants under existing conditions, a southbound right-turn lane is warranted at 275 feet. With the development, it is warranted at 325 feet. I will note, I mentioned the Orbus Way connection will result in traffic diversions. It is anticipated and was designed, according to the comprehensive plan, to take on some of that right-turn traffic. So our study right now provides an estimate, but it will be important, as that is nearing completion, to do some traffic counts and understand after that it's opened and traffic has normalized, so it's been open for a period, to really understand how the traffic flow and how drivers are changing their patterns. I will also note that we have submitted this study to PENDOT. Again, they have jurisdiction over these intersections because they are state roadways, and we do expect to receive comments from them very soon. So at the intersection of 202 and 926, which again was the subject of much discussion in the previous application, as a result of the traffic diversions anticipated as a part of, to the Collector Road through the Craybelly property, the development has no traffic impact at this intersection.
What? What?
Yeah, it's funny, you got the same response when the renovation there.
Guys, guys, we told you from the beginning everything that you may not want to hear. Just give her a chance, let her explain, and then you'll have plenty of opportunity to express your opinions, okay?
So Nicole, is this by design?
Correct. As stated in the Township's comprehensive plan, the goal of this Collector Road system is to reduce congestion at the 202 and 926 intersection, and our study shows that that is the case. So it is by design by the Township.
Now, is Pendott still going to proceed with its improvements at 926 and 202, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yes. It is still a part of the transportation improvement program. It is currently funded for design this year and includes additional capacity of the intersection to include a dedicated southbound 202 right-turn lane and also a second eastbound left-turn lane on 926, modifications to the signal operations to be more efficient, as well as ADA and other traffic signal upgrades. So we did provide supplemental traffic analysis in our report under Appendix U that shows the ultimate conditions with the development, with this plan and the Collector Road, and ultimately Pendott's improvements. And in the future 2030 conditions, Pendott's improvements result in additional, in additional 30 to 40 percent reduction in overall delay at the intersection.
And I think you may have skipped over the signal optimization at New Street and 926, correct?
You are correct, thank you, Greg. We are, but the applicant is proposing, as documented in the study, that they would optimize the traffic signal timings at 926 and New Street, which does show a benefit to the operations.
And by optimization, what do you mean?
Sure. So you modify the timings of the signal to better address all of the movements through the intersection.
And would that include the additional improvement that the developer would be installing at that intersection?
Yes, that is correct.
And did you also discuss, I can't remember, the intersection levels of service at the Collector and West Pleasant Grove and Orbis Way? I know we touched on the accesses, but I'm not sure, working in tandem, what the levels of service were at those intersections.
I believe I forgot to mention those, so I'll go to those now. So at the intersection of the Collector Road and West Pleasant Grove Road, I do believe I mentioned that it will operate at overall level of service A and overall a level of service C or better for the movements during the peak hours, which is acceptable. For the intersection of West Pleasant Grove Road and Orbis Way, that intersection with development will operate at overall level of service A in the morning and overall level of service C in the afternoon.
That's all I have for Nicole, going over the site accesses as well as the off-site intersections. While she's here, it's probably best to keep her here to ask, answer any questions the planning commission may have.
So what we're going to do following is, since we're all here, we can see our, is that we're going to move our microphone to each of you.
Sure.
First of all, we'll start with questions from the planning commission, and then we'll answer questions from the other one. Let's start with you guys, if you have questions for her.
Well, I'll start, I guess. First of all, I find it incredible that you're going to put 300-plus votes on this site, and it's going to have no change in the traffic at 926 and 202. Right now, all of your conditions or your assumptions are based upon Pendott improvements, is that correct?
That is incorrect. Our traffic study was done in its entirety without Pendott's improvements. We only provided a supplemental analysis in the appendices with Pendott's improvements.
So your supplemental analysis is what gets you to no increase?
No. Without Pendott's improvements, really, the mitigation of the residential development in this case is the Collector Road.
Could I just follow up a question? If the mitigation from a traffic point of view was the Collector Road, why didn't you do it in the first place?
Because we weren't required under the law.
But it would be the right thing to do, that's what you're implying.
Not necessarily. We're able to mitigate multiple ways, and that's what the last application showed. So you don't always have to do it the way that somebody tells you. If you have a right under the law to do it, you have the right under the law to do it.
I'm not arguing with the law, I'm saying, was this the right thing to do? And you think this way is a better way?
From a planning perspective, we've always stated no, because we don't think bringing regional traffic through a residential development is appropriate. So that's why we never proposed it the first time. Here, we're doing it, as I stated from the get-go, in order to preserve our rights in the event the Commonwealth Court upholds the lower court's decision. So that's where we all go.
So I guess I'll continue. On the northern end of the property, Orbis Way, that's a fairly steeply sloping roadway that you're proposing to now fund the traffic onto the Stetson Jug Handle. What's going to happen in the winter time, where cars can't get home, there's ice on the road?